Here.
Here. Public hearing is on ordinance number 667. This is amending the CMC Title 11, Section 11-704, Use of Tobacco on City Park Property. Is anyone here to speak on ordinance number 667? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
I just wanted to see if you all might want to look at adding the definition for vapor product like you did for tobacco product in the ordinance. I think it was just left out.
I had asked Roger before the meeting, how are we defining tobacco use, Roger?
Well, I think what she's talking about is probably we kind of define the tobacco products, but vapors will be a little different. I think she may have some wording to deal with vapor that we probably need to add to it. So I don't know, can we do that?
If she'll tell us what the meaning is, we can do it as amended.
Come on, Miller.
Do you mean to say to include, we thought we amended the amendments include for amendment to include vapor products?
Yeah, it already says vapor products. I had just noticed it defined tobacco products, but not vapor products, so. So we could have it match theirs and not have it. I just know sometimes that gets sticky later, but.
So I'm a little confused because you're saying it does, but it doesn't define what that is?
That's the new ordinance is to include vapor products. Originally, the law excluded vapor products. Now it includes, it says.
Are we in a big hurry to do this, Roger? Can we just have that discussion when it comes up and just table it for next month like Councilman or Vice Mayor Fair said? I think that'd probably be prudent, just make sure we get it right.
And the answer might just be leave it vapor.
Well, it says it shall be unlawful for any person to use tobacco products or vapor products on the grounds of any city-owned or controlled playground park, et cetera. This is straight from TCA.
What else would we add?
Well, she was wanting something in Section 2 that defined.
I had just noticed whenever I read the ordinance that you define tobacco products specifically and then vapor products weren't defined specifically, so I was just bringing that up to see.
It defines youth and three plus.
And again, that's from state statute.
But you could add these cigarettes, this amount of.
Well, just remember, though, if you're specific.
Yeah, you open up a can.
You open up a can of worms. Sometimes it's best not to be.
And I'm totally okay. Like, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, so after our discussion, you feel good as far as how it's written now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you for bringing that up.
I guess the question too might be as to chief about enforcing if we, is there an issue enforcing if we just say vapor products?
And that may be something that we'll find throughout the town.
I think vapor products are pretty self-explanatory. I think it's a good wide net. And then unlike tobacco, where there's many forms of usage, you know, from my knowledge, vapor is only consumed one way. You don't spit it and you don't sniff it. You exhale it, right?
And that may be why the state law does not define it, but.
Yeah.
And if we're here in city court and somebody brings that up, God bless them.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn public hearing. So moved. Public hearing is adjourned. Regular agenda. Call to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Here.
Here. Do I hear a motion of the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This evening, the prayer will be given by Councilman Gann. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we get started, I know, of course, we lose friends and loved ones every month. And one person I wanted to bring up was Randy Page, a young man that died way too early, left two kids, teenagers, and a wife, and a very devoted person to Clinton, Clinton City, loved the city, loved serving on 911. And he was just a real good guy. So if we can have a moment of silence for him before we get started.
Father, we thank thee for what you do in each of our lives. We thank thee for people like Randy Page that dedicate their life to making our lives better. We pray that you be with us as we seek to do the business of this city that we may seek to make this city a better place by what we do. Lead God and direct us now in all our decisions and help us to make this city the best place that it could possibly be in thy name. We pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of the amendments of the previous meeting dated August 23, 2021?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens. I know Leon, you had something to present. Please state your name and address, please.
Leon Jacquet, Service Officer for the Anderson County American Legion, address 102 Oakwood Drive here in Clinton, Westwood Estates. I'm here with Rick Liu, Post Commander for the Anderson County American Legion, Post Number 172. We're here again this year to ask for permission to use the streets of Clinton for the, what would have been the 15th Annual Veterans Day Parade, but because of last year's miss, it's our 14th Annual Veterans Day Parade. So we're looking at using Market and Main Street, November 11, Thursday, 6:00 PM. And we hope to have another good turnout like we did on our last one, where we had all three bands from Anderson County. We had the Anderson County Band, the Clinton High School Band, and the Oak Ridge High School Band, which Oak Ridge surprised me because they dwarfed the other two bands combined. So they're huge. But we had a good parade, and we hope to do the same again this year. So we're here just to ask for permission to use the streets. I've already talked with Commander Liu. We're going to do the parade application. He's working on the insurance issues now, and we'll have it all ready to go once you give us the okay.
Do you want to have any questions for Leon? Roger, are we good with everything?
Good.
Catherine, no conflicts or anything?
Are you going to be able to include the Clinton High School and Anderson County ROTC program?
Oh, all the ROTCs, even Oak Ridge will be in it.
Great.
I've already got the Navy from Anderson County on my list.
They're great programs, all three of them.
Hear a motion to approve?
So moved, sir.
So moved, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Leon, thank you for all you do, as always. Communications from the mayor. Did you want to make mention as far as the ribbon or the check presentation on Wednesday?
TDAC will be in town Wednesday doing a check presentation on our LPRF grant. It'll be at 3:30 at JC Park around the pool, entrance to the pool, 3:30 this coming Wednesday.
Don't forget about Fall Festival on Market Street, October 1st and 2nd. Is that right, 1st and 2nd?
Right.
So we have beautiful weather, and I'm sure we'll have great crowds. So a lot of things going on here in this fall season. Yeah, I've got a soccer game going on right now, next two nights, and football homecoming is on Friday. So a lot of things going on. Not Friday?
Senior night.
They switched?
Oh, so is homecoming the last game?
Yeah.
Okay. You gotta raise some more money, don't they?
They can do the parade and not conflict.
There you go. Great. That's all I have. Going to community reports, city school board report. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. Have just a couple of good points of great news to share with you regarding Clinton City Schools today. All of our testing information from T and Ready has come in and wanted to share with you a couple of designations that Clinton City Schools received from the State Department this year. First and foremost, as you know, we get back results on achievement, which is our proficiency percentages, but we also get back information on student growth. In other words, how much have we grown students from the beginning of the year to the end of the year? And that's a real important measure because some of our kids come to us on grade level and could score proficient on the T and Ready test if they took it in the fall. And so it's up to us as educators to take every child where they are and grow them at least one year, no matter what their learning level is. And so that student growth score is called TVAS, and we receive a rating of 1 to 5 each year on how we have grown students. And so we are proud to announce that I think it's for our ninth year in a row, we are a Level 5 district in terms of TVAS. So that's the highest ranking that you could receive in terms of student growth. We also received news that Clinton Elementary and South Clinton Elementary, both are reward schools. And so there's a specific formula that they use to calculate. It has to do with growth and achievement, chronic absenteeism, and several other different measures, but both of those reached reward school status this year. And then the best news of all is that we have always prided ourselves in saying that we were a top 20 district in the state. So there's 146 school districts across the state of Tennessee. And usually, we will fare in the top 20. But we are super, super proud this year to announce that we are actually 10th in the state of Tennessee. So Clinton City Schools has broken the top 10 in the state of Tennessee. So we are super proud that we ranked 10th out of 146 districts across the state. So lots to celebrate. In the middle of a pandemic, I think keeping the doors open certainly served us well. It was a very, very challenging year, but our kids, teachers, and parents rose to the occasion. We are continuing to battle COVID in the schools, continuing to quarantine and isolate students. I will say, this past week, we saw a significant drop in the number of outside exposures and household contact quarantines that were reported with kids having to quarantine. So we're hoping that is certainly good news, that hopefully the spike is close to coming to an end and we can get back to some normalcy. But the school year's going great, and fall break is nine days away, and we'll be a fourth of the way through the school year. So it seems crazy. Time is flying.
It is. Any questions for Kelly?
So any questions for me?
Kelly, I got something in email or something, a fundraiser. Believe that. I can't believe it. Here in Clinton, we're getting a fundraiser. But what's your all's project? Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
So that's specifically for Clinton Elementary School. So each parent, teacher, student organization will do a fundraiser throughout the year. So Clinton Elementary is doing their fundraiser right now, and it will be used for updating playground equipment. And we are working towards getting some all-inclusive playground equipment for some of our special needs children at Clinton Elementary School. And so that fundraiser is going on right now. And if you haven't been hit up by Clinton Elementary kid, it's not done yet. So you'll probably get hit up by one. Catherine Burke Beck would like to see all of you all after the city council meeting so that you can fill in a calendar block.
Yeah. Any other questions for Kelly? Kelly, you're doing a great job. I mean, you and your staff, everybody. It's, I mean, again, we ran out of superlatives as far as what you all are doing.
We've got good people. We've got great people. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you do get Scott Ray tonight. I'm apologizing at the minute.
What a great introduction. Thank you. Everyone should have a budget amendment, the first budget amendment of the year. We're going to have to roll the budget amendments out to y'all as quickly as we know that they need to be rolled out, so they won't accrue till the end of the year. Budget amendment, number one, does need your approval. We're going to increase expenditures in the general purpose school fund by $115,000, and this is funded by a reduction in our fund balance. This is, the lion's share of this amendment is due to the architectural and survey and some other contracts related to a possible South Clinton expansion. The federal projects, well, do you have any questions about the general purpose school fund budget amendment?
Any questions?
The federal projects fund is an increase in, a new grant for $49,000 for K through 6 and $3,000 for pre-K. And that's part of ARP, the American Rescue Plan Act, just a new grant for this year. And then the remaining Esser 2.0 funds that carried over from year 1, which was last year, into the current year is $217,000. Any questions on those?
Do you hear a motion for approval of budget number one?
Sorry, again.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Budget number one passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann?
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning and Appeals met on September 13. In the Board of Zoning and Appeals Agenda, Jason Sharp requesting right-side setback to four feet for property located at 723 Ridgeview Drive. Parcel is zoned R2. This is another one of those narrow properties, and what he's wanting to do is to convert a carport where he already has an existing concrete pad into a garage and changes his driveway. Currently, his driveway comes out right on top of the hill where it's a blind spot for cars coming down Ridgeview, and he wants to move it down the road just a little bit, so maybe that everybody have a better chance of surviving if there should be a situation. And that was approved. An applicant, Mike Wallace, requesting rear setback from 25 feet to 10 feet for property located at Lot 1A Tower Drive. This is kind of a unique situation. The property owner on his backside is the city of Clinton. It's an easement going down to Melton Hill Lake. And there's nobody behind him, so I guess he wants to have a good view of the lake. I hope he doesn't have any soil erosion or whatever. But that also was approved. And then the Regional Planning Commission, both of these in the city of Clinton, applicant city of Clinton requesting rezoning from R2 to B2 for the property located at 746 Charles G. Severs Boulevard. The property is currently zoned R2. This is the Clinton rental property, which has really been miszoned for a number of years, and this is an effort to correct that. And that was approved, that was recommended to the city council for passage. And then applicant city of Clinton requesting final plat review for property located at lots 1 through 4, 5 and 6, 7 and 8, 2R1 and 2R2, 11R2R and 12R. That's on Harbor Drive, property zoned R1. Again, this is trying to deal with some of those issues we've had there in the past. And that is, that was approved by the planning commission. And then also, the planning commission passed or approved the checklist text amendments, which we'll be dealing with in Resolution 669, which is what we have to deal with, with people who want to come before us with plat reviews. Any questions?
Any questions for Councilman Gann?
On the Harbor Drive, Larry, what's the latest, I mean, what was the total thing to wrap all that up? I guess Roger or Larry or?
We've met with all but one property owner, and we can't find him. So we're in the process of working everything out with the other property owners. Everybody's good with it. Worst case, if we can't find this one property owner, he's paid his taxes up, everything's good. Worst case, if we can't find him, by the time we get all the other signatures, get everything through, we may have to condemn that one small piece of right-of-way, get everything cleared. But Phil Frye, ourself, we're still in the process of trying to locate him. He has a residence in Oak Ridge. Last effort may be to send one of our officers down there and see if we can locate him, but everything's pretty well moving forward. It's just kind of slowed down due to COVID last year. We hoped to already have this done. But over the last two or three months, we've had everybody come in, meet with us, meet with the engineers, city attorney, and everybody's been pretty happy with everything. So I'm trying to move forward. And this, once we get this approved, we'll get everything signed off of and be ready to move forward with some of the improvements.
What do you think the timeframe is on that? I know it just probably depends on finding someone, but.
Well, you know, once we get all that done, we'll probably be at the mercy of, you know, the getting it asphalt in right now. We was hoping to get the park asphalt here sometime this week, but Roger's group told us it may be a month or so before they can get to that. So I know CUB's already ready to put the water line in for the fire hydrants now, so they'll probably move pretty quick.
Okay. Any other questions for Councilman Gann? One thing I wanted to bring to your all's attention, the first one, the applicant as far as going from a R2 to B2, Roger has asked for us to have a special call meeting, I guess for the second reading on this, to go ahead and get this. This guy's been waiting for a year to get this resolved. And I think we need to do our due diligence to do what we can to correct this as soon as possible. I was looking at, if you all got calendars, again, we probably just need to make sure we have four here. I can't do it on the 4th, but the 5th, it was a Tuesday, would be a good date for me, unless someone has a conflict, we can move on down the week.
I can't Tuesday, but I could not Tuesday.
Larry, can you do it on Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, the 5th.
As far as I know, I didn't bring my phone with me.
Thank you. You all right?
I'm good.
Is that all right with you, Rob, if we just go ahead and do it? Okay. So I hear a motion to have a special call meeting on the 5th of October at 5:00?
So moved. This has been a 20-year situation that we didn't correct.
Yeah.
You want it at 5:00, not 5:30?
Can you get there? Can you make five?
I can make five.
We could do it any time of the day, but I figure some of you guys got to work. Hear a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. So it'll be Tuesday, October the 5th at 5:00 PM. There's not any board meetings or anything during that time, are there? Bill, you know of any? I thought it was 5:00 or 7:00. Eight days, all right? I thought it was 7 days.
I'm available Thursday, too.
I am not available Thursday.
You're available Thursday.
I can do Thursday.
Are you all right, Ian?
Yep.
That's 10 days.
So do I need to, somebody make a motion for the special call meeting to be October the 7th at 5:00 PM and cancel the meeting on October the 5th?
So moved.
So moved, yeah.
Is that a good, is that a good motion? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Couple of other things while my multiplicity of committees. Gail came and met with us at Green McAdoo, and I thought did a fantastic job of trying to explain the financial situation so that everybody there should understand what our relationship is as far as funding from the state and all the funding. And then she did an excellent job of really making it clear what was what. And I appreciate Gail coming and doing that. And then also, on October the 20th, one of my other committees, the Tree Board, is going to plant a tree in South Clinton Park at 1:00. We didn't do that last year. I think they've talked to you, Kelly, about that. Going to bring some students from South Clinton Elementary and going to plant a tree at the South Clinton Park.
And that's the 20th at 1:00? Is the school system going to provide food for that?
You'll have to ask Kelly.
You're going to provide food?
Scott's saying no.
Mayor's office. Too many fundraisers going on. I can hardly eat myself.
What time?
1:00.
All right.
Thanks for that reminder. I knew I had something, and I forgot, of course. So anything else, Larry?
I think that's all my committees for this month.
Okay. Thank you. Clinton Utilities Board Report, Councilman Fair?
CUB met.
Vice Mayor Fair.
Yeah. CUB met on September 9. We went through the monthly reports for July. We approved status reports and purchase orders and work orders. There was no other business that came before the board that evening. The financials should be disclosed in our packet, and that is my report. I'll entertain any questions.
Everything's running smooth and?
Lights are on, commodes are flushing.
It's a good thing. Any questions for that? Thank you. Larry, do you have any other board or anything on Green McAdoo you'd like to talk about?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Catherine?
My turn?
Yes.
All right. So I'm just going to fill you guys in on some things that Main Street has been doing. First of all, our Plot of the Patriot event could not have happened at all without the city and the partnership that you guys gave us. So thank you so much. I hope that all of our first responders here in Clinton felt honored, because more than anything, that's what that day was about. And I told some of them earlier that the flag that hangs from the fire truck just completely took my breath away that day. So I thought it was a beautiful ceremony, and we had some great community that day. So I'm really proud of that event. The Antique Festival is this weekend. It's Friday and Saturday, and we've been working really hard with the chamber and the city to make sure that that goes well. And I'm being optimistic that we're going to have record numbers this year. Historic Downtown Clinton is providing horse-drawn carriage rides. They're going to start at Clinch River Mercantile, and they are going to go down our historic residential area on Eagle Bend. And our very own Joey Smith is going to be giving tours of the historic area. He's probably going to be in a top hat, so make sure you check that out. Each carriage ride can hold about 16 people at a time, and it will leave every 30 minutes. We're also going to be selling some sweatshirts and some historic downtown glasses. And I just found out that Clinch River Brewery is going to be doing a brand-new beer for the Beer Garden. They're going to be doing like a Oktoberfest German beer that they're going to release that day. So it's going to be, like you said already, great weather, and I think it's going to be great for the city of Clinton. On October 21st, you'll notice I'm going to talk about Joey Smith a lot, actually, because he's a part of our board, and he's great. But on October 21st, we're doing a window decorating workshop for all the merchants on Market Street in hopes that we can all work together and do some really beautiful displays on Market Street this year. If you don't know, Joey used to work for Bass Pro Shop, and he used to do their window displays, so he's really good at that. We have been in the depths of our 501(c)(3) paperwork, and we're chugging along with that. We're almost ready to submit that to the IRS. And then we have also, we're working with Wade Landscaping to do our Welcome to Clinton sign and to add some landscaping and some stonework to that, as well as our walking tour, that will have signs that highlight some of the historical buildings in our area. We are working on some Christmas ornaments. We did find out this week that we were not recipients of the facade grant, but we're working on some other things, and we're going to learn from that opportunity and apply again next year.
I'm surprised we didn't get that. I thought we received some good praises about that.
You know, I thought we weren't going to get that, too. So it came as a little bit of a shock, but we're going to keep working. I'm actually going to a grant writing workshop next week, so we're going to just get better at that.
You can't complain about the grants we've received.
That's right. That's right. So, and lastly, my last item is me actually coming to you guys for some help. I think we have a very exciting opportunity for the town of Clinton. Charlotte Johnson, who owns Johnson &amp; Company on Main Street, she's a business owner, and I think anytime a business owner wants more community involvement, I think it's just something that we need to listen to. So she came to ET, and she came to me, and she said, I want to do an ice skating rink for this historic downtown Clinton. The Hoskins family has generously said, please use our space, please use our park. I have talked to an insurance company through the National Main Street Program. I've talked to CUB, and I've talked to the city as well. And I think it's something that we can do. And I think it's something that we can do, but we can't do it alone. The ice skating rink itself is a hundred thousand dollars and that provides the construction of the skating rink width, but they also provide the rentals and they provide ways to maintain the ice. I have done some research and I've talked to Larson J., who's a county commissioner in Knoxville, who started the ice skating rink in Market Square. And he gave me some really good information. So I looked at all the days that they're gonna be open, which I think we would probably mimic as well. And it's Monday through Thursday from four to nine until the kids get out of school. And then the last two weeks before Christmas would have extended hours. So he told me that the weekend dates bring in about two to three hundred people to Market Square, but sometimes up to five hundred people, which I just thought, gosh, if we have that every weekend day in downtown, I think that really changes the landscape of downtown and people shopping in our shops down there. He said about seventy-five people during the weekdays and they charge twelve dollars for adults and nine dollars for children. So I won't bore you with all the math, but I did go through and I added up all the hours that we'd be open. I'm expecting that we're gonna have to hire six people to work, 'cause that's what he told me. And if we paid them at ten dollars an hour, we would profit thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. But then after we paid employees, we would be able to profit nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars with the worst case scenario numbers that he gave me. And that doesn't include anything if we were able to coordinate with the schools to be able to bring the kids over during the day or something else like that, which I think would also be great. I think it would be such a great year to do this because of COVID. So we don't have to plan some big event for downtown and then have to cancel it if the numbers start going up. This is something outside that the kids can do and they can enjoy Christmas. So I'm asking the city, I've also asked the county to provide twenty-five thousand dollars towards this, but I do believe that the sales tax revenue, you will see that money back.
Questions for Catherine?
Who manages it? Will I, we hire the people or you would hire the people?
So that would be something Historic Downtown Clinton is ready to take on. We are in the process of being a five oh one C three, so we would take all the donations and the money and then pay for the rink and then manage the employees as well.
But the rink itself is about a hundred thousand?
Yes. Yep. If it's something that the city is willing to commit to, I think we're close financially.
So my question I had before is, can we support, I don't wanna say this the right way, but can we support something that's on private property?
I would think you can as long as it's for a public, since it's the Main Street program, I think since we're supporting the Main Street program, I think it's good. Is it worth?
Um, I don't. So. Well, we still have an account that we would be able to do it through. Yeah, through the chamber.
The city can donate to a nonprofit. You have to publish that and basically that's what you're gonna do, you're donating to a nonprofit.
Regardless if it was.
If the Main Street program doesn't have the five oh one C three at the time, you can't donate to them, you'll have to donate to the.
The chamber.
Through the chamber.
To the chamber.
Is there a place to store it off season? So this could be.
No, they come and pick it up.
Nope, so you get the same costs every year. You're basically building a sandbox. So by using two by sixes and two point eights and some crushed gravel, you put all the piping in there. There's no runoff, there's no drainage that happens 'cause it's all in a contained area.
So has anybody looked at the Hoskins Park and to say, yeah, we can do it here?
Yeah, so actually.
Because it's not, I mean, it's level, but it's not level, you know?
So it would have to be leveled within an inch. And right now it's like three feet. So that is something that we're gonna have to get done. And I think that family has looked at how they're gonna do that.
'Cause I mean, I think, I think that's the ideal place. I mean, from a Market Street standpoint, but there's probably, you know, behind the Darty Building, for example, that's probably the flattest parking area.
Yes.
Maybe the end of Column where there's a little cul-de-sac there.
And those are some.
Anything else?
There, yeah, so we would like to get the company here yesterday to come look at some other options if that one isn't. But the park is thirty-two hundred square feet, which would make it eighty by forty. And that's the exact same size as the one downtown in Market Square.
Well, I'll be the first one. I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that our city, our size, has never probably done or very seldom done. And Zach said, I think, a couple of months ago, we've done fantastic. And I think it's, in a way, it's kinda like a celebration for all of us, not a reward, but to say, hey, we're doing great. Let's do some of these extra things. And it's, I mean, compared to what we have in our budget and what we're doing, then that's a small drop. And I think not only our community, but the communities around us will be, it'll be very well attended. So I hope, and I know you are, I mean, as far as the food trucks and the people on the sides having booths for different things, 'cause you know there's gonna be a ton of kids in that area.
Yeah.
And it could really be done. And I know you're all gonna do that. I think it could be really done nicely.
Yeah, so my hope is that so many people from surrounding areas come to Clinton and fall in love with it during that time. And that's something that we see repeat business from all year round.
So what's the timeframe in this? What's the dates? Like, when you're gonna open, when's it gonna be the last day?
Yeah, so it would go in either right before or right after Thanksgiving and be here through January second. I actually had somebody ask me, oh, could you have it longer in January? People are looking for things to do. But Knoxville says they have lost money trying to do that. Like, it just takes a drop. So I don't think that's something that we should try to do, especially in the first year, maybe down the road. But also, you know, after talking to Knoxville, they do a great job of a big city rink. But we're Clinton and we're different. So I do want it to have the small town feel. Like, I want, if the high school cheerleaders wanna come sell hot chocolate, I would love for them to do that. You know, I think we have more of our small community of people come down to make money.
I had one more question as far as the price. When you, fourteen dollars to, or twelve dollars, nine dollars, is that a certain time period? Is that for an hour? Or is it all night?
No, so they said that most people love the idea of ice skating, but they only come and skate for about thirty minutes.
Then they can't walk the next day.
The legs.
So you could come skate, all they want, if you want, is guys.
That's a great idea.
Very good idea.
You ready to comment, Zach?
Yeah, I do. You know, I guess for disclosure, I'm related to the Hoskins family. It's my understanding, though, that they don't stand to benefit financially from this. They're not seeking to make any money or anything. They're donating that space. Also, I think they're in preliminary discussions to renovate and flatten and level the property, anticipating that, you know, I don't know how that logistically is gonna work. I know that that will happen at some point. So if it doesn't work out this year, if it's a success, I think next year that would be really ideal to have it.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that we should support. It was, the genesis of it came from one of our Clinton residents and business owners. And then I know Councilman Stamy really got on board and as well as Catherine Birbeck and her leadership. I think it's fantastic. And I think it's the right, you know, let's risk it. Let's take a calculated risk.
Right time.
Yeah, right time. And I'm gonna steal something from Travis Urban. Let's bet on Clinton. You know, so I think it's great.
Well, and Larson J. also told me that the first few years, you know, it's kinda just getting off the ground. But they now currently make thirty to forty thousand dollars every year on the ice skating rink. So it is something that has potential to grow, that the Main Street program can also collect funds for, to be able to do other things in Clinton as well.
The committee has already contacted three or four businesses that actually won't put their name on the ice skating rink. And of course, that'll change from year after year, who wants to sponsor it the next year. So the towns are excited about it, the merchants are. And I think if we put four or five really staunch merchants together, I think it'll be pretty well financed the first year. It's not an event. I think it's a traditional event that we can have here every year, just like Market Square. Pretty neat deal.
Any other questions?
Catherine, update on some of the restaurants? There's a flurry of activity, permits and stuff. What's the latest on what's coming and can you update us on any of those?
I do know there's a chocolate shop that's going in over by the railroad tracks, by the real dry cleaners. It used to be Laris the Puppy Place.
Rumpy Puppies.
Other than that, I'm not sure. I don't know if you have any other updates, but.
I make a motion, we approve.
So moved. Motion to second, any further discussion?
And so to clarify, it would be to give twenty-five thousand dollars to the five oh one C three. And if that's not there, then we would default to the chamber. If that's what you're, yes, that's exactly what I wanna do.
Wherever you think we should take those funds.
Thank you, I'm very excited for what this is.
Any further discussion?
We may vote no.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now, I had been in a meeting before, they said aye, they all agreed and then I left and they said no. So I haven't gone back over there lately, but anyway, that's another story. Catherine, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you guys.
General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna jump around a little bit since we're talking about downtown. I received notification from T dot of the approval of our Phase Three TAP grant application. This project continues our downtown pedestrian improvements along South Main Street from Broad Street to Severs Boulevard and Clinch Avenue and connecting with the walking trail at Lakefront Park. The total project cost is one million, three hundred and two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, which includes a local match of two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and the design right of way cost of an estimate of two hundred and six thousand. I request authorization to execute the T dot TAP grant Phase Three project contract and related documents when received.
Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion to second, any further discussion? Again, Roger, I just maybe if you or Bill or Gail or whoever can, I had talked to Ken Leiner today about something else and he was really wanting some good information on this since we didn't do, the state didn't do a press release. But this is the kinda stuff we need to get out. It's really good, good stuff, so. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Just kinda FYI with Phase one, two, and three that we receive now, that's total project of three million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand for downtown, just our portion. And that does include what C U B. will be doing kinda as we're tearing things up. They'll be coming in, putting new water and sewer lines in for downtown. You know, I know how much the infrastructure they'll be improving, so it'll be a major facelift, infrastructure improvements for all of downtown, really from South Hick Street or North Hick Street, already Clinching, Maine, and all of Market Street now. So a big multimillion dollar project for downtown.
I talked to Roger about, because this is an ongoing grant process and he said, well, we need to take your off, kinda catch your breath, which we didn't get. We're gonna be, we're gonna be a lot of torn up roads for a while. But I would certainly encourage, you know, as long as roads are touching this, we can continue to do this, like North Hicks, maybe even Eagle Bend. So there's some really good opportunities for this that I would encourage after this year to get back on and let's try to get some more of those grants.
True.
We have received a request from Wesley Wilson and Melanie Carter, three thirty, Riverview Draft, to abandon an unapproved portion of Rose Street off of Riverview Draft, quit claim the property to them. This will give them road frontage to their property that is currently landlocked. There are a small portion of the land that is affected by C U B. sewer line that will require an easement that is being provided. I recommend that the unimproved portion of Rose Street be abandoned and quit claim to Mr. Wilson and Ms. Carter.
Hear my.
They have a small piece of land that they need to put a trailer on. Right now they have no road frontage and they're just needing this small piece for a driveway.
And it's coming from Rose Street?
It is coming actually from Riverview, but it's an abandoned part of actually Rose Street that was able, if it had came on, Rose Street had came on down, it would connect it to Riverview.
It's an isolated piece of the original Rose Street from the herbies and porsches. Okay, yeah, 'cause I was looking at it on the map.
Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Finance, I'll defer to Gail.
You've got your sales tax at four point four, about fourteen, a little over fourteen percent. County was up four point six, nine percent. A big part of the increases was the city of Clinton this month. Our revenues have started out good, from about fifty thousand dollars over last year. All things pretty much being the same. Our tax aggregate, we got our taxes loaded last week. And with the exception of public utilities, which we don't actually get those until about January, we are about twenty-five thousand over the aggregate amendment I used for budgeting. So that's good, we like to see it closer a little bit over, so that is good. I have a budget amendment for you again. I will add this twenty-five thousand to that as well for the comptroller's office. One correction of the paving management consultant is an increase of seventy-five hundred, not fifteen hundred. Most of these are coming out of either assigned fund balance where we set aside the capital project, some of it's coming out of unassigned, depending upon what it was. There's a couple of grants in there, the police department got a grant, the fire department received one, but mainly this is just stuff that's come up through the last month that was not budgeted. So if you have any specific question, I tried to put an explanation so you know kind of what was forward.
Do you need a motion on the budget?
Budget amendment, yes.
Is it budget amendment number one? Hear a motion for approval of the budget amendment number two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further question? Any other questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. So question, the increase from last year as far as our monthly numbers, what, our sales tax dollars, what was that, what is that for this year versus last year's numbers?
The percentage?
Yeah, what projections did you?
Did we use in budgeting?
Mm-hmm. 'Cause we started, we started off.
You're getting into the secret sauce.
That's my hidden money.
Was it just a couple percent, whatever?
I think I used based on actuals, but I'd have to look to be honest.
Oh, here we go. Here's the slow walk right here. We won't hear for eight months. Then we'll forget, we'll go on with lots of something else. No, but I guess it really struck me when I saw the numbers are so strong. I mean, strong number, that's a real strong number.
Well, and what we actually saw too.
June, is it July?
Last month for the first time, they are now also distributing what they call either unallocated, basically there's a pot of sales tax at the state level, if I understand this correctly, that cannot be allocated out to a destination. So then it's split. So we got, I don't know, it seems like it was twenty, twenty-five thousand each month for that. So it's kind of a big part of it with this, with the state, with out of state sales and that those continue to.
Is that based on population, I guess?
That distribution is, yes.
Can you imagine what if ours was twenty-five thousand and ours, there's been ten thousand people, what? That's good to know. Thank you, any other questions for Gail? Thanks, Gail.
I also provided to you our handout beginning of the meeting with our health insurance renewals. I was just gonna have, see if you had any questions. Angela worked on this and she's here tonight that could probably answer any questions there to me. Came in real good again this year. We own our Blue Coast Blue Shield, it was at seven percent. So anytime we can come in, single digits is really good. Dental pretty well held the same, so did our Superior Vision and our Mutual of Omaha. So really, really came in real good numbers.
What did we budget? Can we ask the? What you mean, like increase?
I think we budgeted fifteen percent.
And it come in at seven?
Came in at seven.
Usually by the time we take into account our H R A., it'll take it down another five percent, but we still came out ahead on it.
Questions?
Good.
It's good, it's great.
Under Public Works, we did sealed bids last Friday for resurfacing a. Under Public Works, we did sealed bids last Friday for resurfacing a pine road in Oak Circle. Based on the review of the bids received, we recommend the project be awarded to Rogers Group Incorporated at a total cost of forty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. This purchase will be funded through the assigned fund paving capital projects of the Public Works Department. This is a road off of, of.
Lamar?
No. Spring Street that we didn't pave a few years due, due to some utilities when we did Spring Street. And are about ready to rip up, wrap up the utilities so we can go up and finish paving it.
Is that the one up to the radio station? Okay. Good. Hearing motion?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
We'd had a third-party vendor who wanted to evaluate our roads and how we should pave them, timeline. Have we got any feedback from that yet?
They're in the process of doing all that now, so we hadn't had any feedback. This, this road is in pretty bad shape, a bunch of utilities. We did the other roads up there, this one, we just couldn't do it at the time.
Will there be any feedback and give us a chance to pave more before paving season's over or?
Probably not this year, no. But hopefully by spring, yes. And of course, we're waiting too on some of the American Rescue Act money, that Gail's got to sit through about ten classes in the next month, literally ten classes, to try to figure out if we can spend it on paving. And because we're getting a little under three million dollars from here, so hopefully.
That's right down your alley. You won't be able to sleep at night. So, so Melton Hill, the, the dog park, you don't think you'll be able, you don't think it'll be paved this year?
No, we're hoping to get these two done this year.
But this, this two is the radio station, right? These, those two roads, Pine and Oak Circle?
Yes, the one I just read is, is going to the radio station.
Right, but, but they can't do the dog park at the same time they do this, right? I didn't think they could do that.
Depends on when they get, can get to it. Right now, they're not going to be able to do it this week as we.
Because you, I mean, I'm just thinking, you only got, what, six or eight weeks at the most for this paving season? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing motion to approve?
So move.
Second, I got.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay. Recreation Department, also, we received sealed bids last Friday for paving of two parking lots in the entrance drives inside the park for our dog park and for the resurfing, a section of Riverview Drive at the entrance. Based on the review of the bids, we would recommend the project be awarded to Rogers Group at a total cost of ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Purchase will be funded through the assigned funds for capital projects through the Recreation Department.
So this does not include the, the service entrance that Duane put in on that back?
Yes.
So everything that's, the road right now will be paved in there?
The two roads, the two parking lots, and the part of Riverview that didn't get paved, now the new, new road that comes in.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's all I have.
Great.
Roger, question, the, we had a special call meeting a while back, and some people in the audience wanted to see what we were seeing, and we had to go make copies. The TVs here, I don't know if they've ever been on the screens. Is there any way to wire those so that they can be plugged into somebody's iPad so they could, we could project to the audience what we're seeing?
I meant to check with Matt today. I think we've got a laptop over there close to Archie that is now connected to that one.
Is Archie going to present something?
We're rolling. We should put him in charge.
Yeah, so we think, so you, the TV audience will not see it.
Well, I'm thinking of something at the podium and something here, you know, like if something, like one of the lawyers was presenting to us one time, and he's quoting all this stuff, be nice if we could see, maybe one TV turned towards the audience, one towards us, where some, a speaker could plug into the podium and it'd be projected of. Or if we had an iPad up here, what we were looking at, the audience could see it. So multiple spots that an iPad or something could be plugged in.
Well, again, I don't know why, if we got, we had the agenda and everything's, you know, on our iPad, that they wouldn't have the capability back there when we talking about an ordinance or maybe a zoning issue that you'd be able to put that map, they, they would have the, the autonomy to put that map up there while we're talking.
Initially, if it was going through the system affair, what was on the screens is then what TV land would see. So it, let's say we put the agenda up for the whole meeting, that's all they would see.
They wouldn't see our beautiful faces.
We could not segregate, exactly. We could not segregate that from what the TV, so we're, we're working on it. But right now, we think we've got this TV working with the laptop, and we'll see, hopefully it goes a little bit.
Well, I'd like to oppose that we use it in some fashion and more user-friendly for the audience that shows up, because they really don't see what we're seeing. And sometimes it's hard to, it's easier when, to understand something if you see it.
And, I mean, the technologies out there, everything we discuss can be done. You may, you may have to go outside our internal IT department and go outside.
We're trying to work with the ACC TV. That's where it initially all came from.
Okay. Or maybe you can kind of present what we're looking for, see what they can do. Put that on your list, too. You good? Feel better?
I did for my office.
Thank you, Gail.
Any other questions for Roger? Roger, you're doing a great job. Appreciate what you do. I know Monday was, uh, didn't let you down today. Under ordinances and resolutions, first readings of new ordinances, ordinance number six eighty-eight, rezoning R two to B two, south Charles G. Severs Boulevard. Hearing motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion?
This is what we're having, especially.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Gans.
Yes.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Sain.
Yes.
Councilman McAdams.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, ordinance number six sixty-eight passes on first of two readings. Ordinance number six sixty-nine amending the CMC Title fourteen, Section fourteen dash seven oh three, the site plan checklist. Can somebody speak on that?
This was primarily put in place to prevent last-minute additions and changes before they brought a site plan to us. You know, there've been some situations where the day that they're presenting it, all of a sudden, they change something on it. Now there's a timetable in it, and also there's an appearance clause in it, too. What, what's this going to look like?
Good.
So there's about three, three changes in it that deal with the time factor and the appearance factor.
Good, good. Hearing motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Having, uh, motion to second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gans.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Sain.
Yes.
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 Yes, ordinance number six sixty-nine passes on first of two readings. Under second and final readings, ordinance number six sixty-seven, this is amending the CMC Title eleven, Section eleven dash seven oh four, use of tobacco on city park property. Hearing motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
A motion to second. Any further discussion? One thing to keep in mind, I had talked to Roger about during the fair, if, you know, if that can be used. And keep in mind, if, if I want to say this right, Roger, that this, this was, this is, this is the fair's property during that time. So it's not really a park, it's, it's the fair's property, and they can do what they wish on that, so if, I'm sure that would be come to question, um, coming, coming back around in July. So any other questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gans.
Yes.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Sain.
Yes.
Councilman McAdams.
Yes.
Councilman McAdams.
Yes.
Yes, ordinance number six sixty-seven passes on second and final reading. No resolutions, any old business before us?
How can we answer any questions about the garbage cans? I mean, we're getting blasted daily. Has everyone got their garbage cans? Who do they call if they have not got their garbage cans? Bill Riggs?
Bill Riggs.
Archie, Archie was pouring.
I would make a suggestion, another phone blast, my old one didn't get picked up, and I left it down there, if they would just say, leave it out there the next week. People just want to know, do they leave it down there, or they bring it back to their house? The old ones you.
Well, Roger had a good explanation for that.
And, and it's, it was really bad timing on waste management. They, COVID hit them real bad the last two weeks, and there was really nothing they could do about it. It was just absolutely terrible timing they had. The week they were supposed to pick up the old garbage cans, they actually had to shut down their Knoxville office. They had several employees calling sick, and they, they told us at the last minute, hey, we can't pick up, you know, we won't be able to pick them up today. Then they told us, you know, if they, if the ones that they do want to pick up, tell the people to leave a note on the garbage table, there's no way we can get that word out. So it was really bad timing they had. There was no way besides some of the phone calls or getting Chuck to put something on our website or our Facebook, and he did a good job of trying to get it out there. It was just absolutely the worst timing they had in trying to work with us and the citizens of getting the word out there. And we tried the best we could to be the middleman between the waste management and, and, and our citizens, so, you know, everybody be patient. Bill is still taking phone calls. If it's somebody elderly that can't actually handle these bigger cans, there's a process that you go through. You can get a, a, well, it's a doctor's excuse, and we'll fill it out, and they'll actually pick it up at the back door. And Bill's, I think, took about ten of those so far, which is not bad. So they're in the process, and we'll just continue working through it with everybody.
But the old cans, are we to leave them down to be picked up this next cycle or not?
Yes.
Can we send that out via the, we got a voicemail, I thought.
They just sent three or four, two or three out so far.
I didn't get the, the most recent one yet.
You got another listed number.
No, I've gotten all the rest. I don't know.
So there's people still without cans?
I think three is.
Yeah.
Yeah, still, people still ask.
It's got to be very few.
I like the cans.
What's your cell phone?
What's your cell phone?
Here, I got it right here at the beginning.
That's true.
Anything else about the garbage cans?
Nothing about it.
Okay. Any new business before us?
I don't know.
I was thinking about Halloween this year. I think it's going to be on a Sunday, but we can talk about that. We're going to talk about that on the.
We've already told people, I mean, we never changed the date on Halloween, so we told them the thirty-third.
We've always changed the date on Halloween.
We haven't changed.
When it's on, when it's on Sunday, we've done it on Saturday. I guarantee we have. I guarantee we have. How much you want to bet?
Well, you may have, the city didn't.
You had your trunk or treat, Ted.
All right, that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
So move.